March 4th, 2020, would you please join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now is the time for citizen input. If there is anyone in the audience. Rondo, would you like to make your statement? And you know, if you have any documentation, yours to leave it with Sharon.
Thank you. I do not have documentation. I'm Rondo, I've lived in Bend for almost thirty years and I'd just like to talk about exploding trains in central Oregon. There's no demonstrations, I have no matches, but nobody's in danger. We've had some serious conversations recently in town and I expect there to be louder conversations about the danger of exploding trains passing through or the potential of an exploding train being in our town, coming through our town and us not being able to repair ourselves from that. And we've seen how in other communities across our nation, that exploding town can actually wipe out the town and that town not have the ability to repair itself. So I would like our county commission to start exploring and asking questions of certain people. We had a meeting a few weeks ago. Three fifty dash shoots dot org hosted a very informative discussion and some people came out of the closet that were very well informed and are asking the right questions. And I hope that you reach out and ask those similar questions. If you look out the windows behind me, you'll see nothing between this building and the rotor tracks. We are well within the blast zone in this room. Think about it, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was three fifty dash shoots dot org?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Diane Hodeak is the main contact.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other comments from the public? All right, we have our consent agenda today.
I'll move approval of consent agenda. I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? No? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and I did want to confirm that Ashley is a woman. It was a thank you letter, so it's always nice to know that we're properly identifying people that we're thanking. So the first item on our calendar today is from our stabilization center.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Holly Harris, program manager at Health Services.
Cheryl Smallman, business manager, Health Services.
George Conway, Health Services.
Shane Nelson, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, everyone.
Hello, thank you for having us. I'm here today to request approval to accept Central Oregon Health Council funds, one-year grant funds that we received, which in addition to the sheriff's office contribution would add seven point five FTE. So we're here today to request approval for those FTE so that we can begin adding this capacity to the stabilization center, which would allow us to operate seven days a week, expanded hours.
Great, did we ever hear from the city of Bend?
We did, we are in the process of, I believe, finalizing our IGA with them, the contribution of seventy thousand dollars, one-time funds. So we, I think we're very close to getting that signed off on.
Okay, but they didn't give us any more?
No.
Okay.
Not at this stage, no. They're open to further discussions in, you know, the coming months and years, but I think for right now, this contribution is all that they've offered to this point.
Okay, well, we'll keep working on it, right?
Yep, we will.
Every day is an opportunity.
Every day.
I know it is, isn't it? Do you have any other, do you have any questions about this?
Well, I know that there was a larger request and this is the Health Council's, you know, financial commitment right now, but being able to get to seven days and then kind of expanding or managing with the resources available is going to be very valuable, opening the doors. So, you know, I'm supportive of receiving these dollars and getting to that seven-day cycle and then seeing what it looks like. And I think that's kind of the chicken and the egg problem, especially with the city of Bend specifically. You know, is this going to be valuable? Is this going to help the officers who are in that spot between the emergency room and the jail? You know, hopefully this is really going to work out in our community.
Right, I agree, and I think we'll be able to collect quite a bit of data over the course of this first year and operating seven days a week will really help show the value.
So a couple, I guess for some reason the stuff that was online isn't here, so I don't have the little there was daily graphs of which funding went to which people. A couple of cautions I have, I think it's great that the sheriff's office is contributing. I think that's great, the Central Oregon Health Council's contributing. I'm kind of disappointed, you know, that's it. You know, the sheriff or the city, Jim Porter had offered that seventy thousand two years ago, or whenever we started. So I'm kind of surprised we didn't go back or, you know, ask him for another or whatever. I mean, we're lucky that we have the Central Oregon Health Council, but we'll see how it goes. But there, there's not necessarily a permanent gift either, so that's a question. The other part of it that I'm concerned with is that it looks like what you're saying is if these columns in this graph are people, is that what those are?
No, those are, I believe, hours, correct?
Well, they're hours, but is there one person or?
No, those aren't representing people.
Okay, so that's the hours you're going to be open.
Correct.
My concern is that, I don't know how you spread out your seven and a half people, but, you know, for the ones we've visited in Eugene and Marion County, Clackamas and Washington, well, Clackamas and Washington barely operate on the weekends and that's been based on need. I mean, they apparently don't have anybody show up, so they can find their hours. We may see that. The other is Marion and Lane don't have very much staffing at night. They have one or two people. So my question is that in opening a new business, which this essentially is, I don't know that you'll need four people from, you know, six to nine every night to start out with. I don't know how many, this isn't Chick-fil-A where everybody knows to, you know, that you have an overabundance when it starts. It'd be interesting to see, but I was wondering, are you going to implement the FTE as you need them? In other words, we have some people show up, so you have two or three that night, but then you're having more, so you have more people available, or how are those FTE going to?
So I think our plan is to hire all the FTE because we do have needs even during our current operating business hours now. And so I think the volume will actually increase at the stabilization center with the facilitation of law enforcement drop-off, so I expect our volume to go up even more. But I think we will be adjusting our staffing model based on need continuously throughout this project. And I've seen that through the other facilities we've toured, that you think you need this many people at night and then it turns out you don't, and maybe you need a few more people during the day, or maybe the weekends need to be adjusted. So we're completely open to
I agree with that.
To changing our model as the need arises. We're not stuck on any one particular staffing model.
And when you say you have needs already before the stabilization center, so those are those aren't related to the stabilization center. So are these employees for the stabilization center or for some other department that you have needs?
No, they're for the stabilization center. We have crisis needs now. I mean, our volume, we have seen in this last probably year, six days, or at least the last eight months, we used to get, you know, one to two walk-ins at the same time and we were able to manage that. We're consistently getting four to five at once. And so we're pulling in our mobile crisis team staff, and we're managing. We're using all the staff we have available for the crisis team to help meet those needs when they arise. We're just seeing it a little bit more consistently and I think the staffing model that we're looking to propose once we get these folks hired is to also account for the number of holidays or number of TML that staff gets, they take time off, so we don't have an on-call pool to pull from because that's the challenge here in Deschutes County, to develop that. So we have to have a staffing model that accounts for somebody being off on vacation at any given time, which happens pretty regularly.
Yeah, I get that. So you're saying that the people you think will be going to the stabilization center are already showing up at your offices and so they'll be moving over to the stabilization and you can immediately use the extra help?
Correct.
Is what you're saying, okay. Well, just, I just guess my point is be aware of that. We have another facility that has a lot of employees that doesn't have very many people showing, using it, and so I'm concerned, so that was the comment. And the other is, I hope you'll keep track of the ones that might have gone to the emergency room or came from the emergency room that were, because, you know, our meeting we had with the hospital thinking that unless they get to a certain level, they're not really seeing a benefit from it, is what they basically told us when we met with them months ago. If we could prove that level, then we have something more to go back to them with for permanent financing.
It is a huge focus of mine to make sure we are capturing that data. And so we have OHSU helping us with our data collection tools and that is one of the many data points that we'll be collecting is if the stabilization center hadn't been here, where would you have gone? Would you have gone to the emergency room? Would you have just, you know, been homeless? Like, what would have been your situation? So we'll be teasing into that data pretty heavily.
Yeah.
And we're, Commissioner, if you'll allow me, we are also taking a very athletic approach to gathering a baseline years' worth of data for each of the institutions and the ER and hospitalizations and then look at whether there's any correlation with as we stand up and as we provide more services with reduction in those needs.
Yeah. I could see at some point, I mean, having listened to the hospital people in that one meeting, that we would have a shuttle from, parked at the emergency room, basically to transport. I really could see that. I don't know how many come a night and maybe it's, maybe it's the sheriff's office, but I would think it wouldn't have to be that. But anyway, I just, if our stabilization center works like you're talking about it.
Well, it'll take a while to accustom our partners in the community, but we hope that law enforcement and then others, maybe others that have been seen previously by crisis, will have a good idea about when they can come directly at us rather than the emergency room. So the idea of a shuttle in some ways is sort of appealing, but I'm hoping that will actually upscale everybody so that they know when to divert folks and bring.
And we are spending a lot of time right now scheduling meetings with all the different law enforcement agencies, with the hospital, with anybody who might be utilizing the stabilization center from a referral source. And so we've got, we've got meetings scheduled, many, many, many of them, to meet with all the different sergeants and patrol officers so that we can explain how the stabilization center is going to benefit them.
I know from our behavioral health meeting last week, that whole community is so excited to have it open and the need and the hour and a half I spent in the emergency room last summer and with my little jacket on that said I was a commissioner and everyone is telling me how we need, you know, how we need to have our stabilization center open so that people that are sitting in the emergency room should really be at stabilization. And then also the fact that alcoholism is a huge problem in our county and I think we have to look forward to adding the sobering with it, you know, eventually when we get our numbers down. Because eighty percent of the people that end up in the emergency room are using alcohol and unfortunately, and they need some help. And so somehow we've got to be really good at getting those people help that do end up with us. That's going to be a really big goal. Stop the cycle.
It is, and many of the folks that we serve with mental health conditions have co-occurring substance use disorders, whether it be alcohol or other substances. So we'll be addressing that currently with the current model of the stabilization center, but even more so with the addition of the sobering.
Thanks for saying that, Commissioner. I want to say that you all have been very supportive and I am ever impressed at the desire to be proactive as we try and tackle some of these issues and do the best we can because the fact of the matter is none of this is going away and it is the right thing to do to take care of these folks and help them get back on the path of being a productive citizen. And then on the flip side, it's the right thing to do by diverting them from the criminal justice center where appropriate and maintaining and enhancing the livability of this community. That's also my responsibility as well. And last year, our office had below a thousand mental health calls and peace officer hold calls. But you start, you know, the year before we had just over a thousand. You start thinking, well, that's, that's two to three a day. And it's becoming a common occurrence where before it was maybe you'd have one or two a month.
but I just can't say enough about the partnership with BOCC in this and the forward thinking. So, that's appreciated. It's, it's a huge benefit to public safety and it's a huge benefit to this community, and I don't want that to go unnoticed. Thank you.
I'll, I'll echo that. We appreciate your support on this.
Well, thank you for the kind words.
Well, and, and flipping it back around, I mean, we wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't the leadership from the department and the sheriff's office. I mean, there's lots of sheriff's offices that haven't embraced this, so both of those have been really the key to it. We're mostly making sure that we check the boxes, and thank you.
So, uh, kind of acknowledging this is a tri-county effort also, as, as in this will be available to our partners in Jefferson and Crook, uh, public safety, um, I'm thinking that, you know, the ambulance calls also, you know, it's not just public safety, it could be a medical transport and they determine that, okay, this person really is, you know, a lot of variables that could be dealt with at this stabilization center, not just an emergency room visit, uh, from EMS also.
So, one more good point on that, Commissioner?
Yeah.
The Joint Information Center is a perfect example of great partnerships-
Yeah.
... in this county and the tri-county area. But I know that my, uh, tri-county partners, Sheriff Gotteney, Sheriff Atkins, and, and the police departments in, in those areas are, are looking forward to this resource as well because the fact of the matter is you're only as safe as your neighbors. I've always said that. It's, uh, you know, the, the criminal element or aspect of it knows no boundaries, and, and so that's a, a great point to bring up.
But acknowledging the Central Oregon Health Council, that is a tri-county effort-
Right.
... and it's stabilizing and, uh, population and, uh, health for everybody.
So.
Great.
So, let's move, um, do we need a approval of this FTE request?
Um, not formally, Commissioners. If with your verbal approval, the actual additions of the FTE will come back in a budget adjustment, likely on a consent agenda next week. So, uh, we're hearing approval today, so we'll move forward with the recruitment more than likely, and then the actual adjustment to add them formally into the department will be next week.
Well, yeah, I'll acknowledge, uh, Central Oregon Health Council funds in the seven and a half FTE as described.
It sounds really good when you say half a million, doesn't it? I know, I know, I'm like, it's only 500, but you know what? Every dollar counts and we have to keep looking for more funding, so.
And we will.
We are, so, yeah, thank you for never giving up. And yes, reminding, you know, that Chief Porter did offer that 70, what, two years ago or something? We'll have to talk to some of the people on City Council.
We, we are still very much in talks with them, and they have verbally said to us that they are very interested in this project, interested in partnering. We have not gotten any kind of final-
There's a certain aspect of feel free to ask us to be in talks with the councilors because we see them on other things and they're, they ask us for things and support on, you know, we have lots of mutual projects, so-
Right, I will do that.
-we're working together on the-
Worked well when we partnered on these issues in the past, so thank you for your support.
Thanks.
And we have a facility date maybe about a month or so from now, is that, yeah?
The, um, date that we're working with, the, uh, certificate of occupancy obligation date has been, uh, pushed back to, um, April 30th, so we're planning at this point, and we'll send, uh, hold the date then soon and invitations later, uh, on, uh, having an, an opening and ceremony, uh, the morning of May 1st.
About seven weeks then, yeah. Well, uh, and shout out to the contractor, you know, I mean, that was a project in itself, getting somebody available to do that redevelopment, and it was quite a, uh, facility redevelopment too, tearing down the walls and rebuilding everything.
Well, and the, the delay was, I understand occasion primarily by some delay in getting , uh, ligature-free, uh, doors and secure doors fabricated quickly, so hopefully we'll be, and even if there were some slight hiccup, there's no reason why we can't have the opening, the ceremonial side. And I'll point out that that's intended to be able to do that before we're seeing clients at the-
Yeah, great.
Will it take a couple of weeks then for actually everything to be ready to open?
I, I think we're, it kind of depends on how the schedule plays out in the next couple of weeks, but I think our hope is to either be moving in the, uh, the week, the first week of May, so the May 3rd, 4th, and hope, I hope that we'll be operating that week, but it may not be till the following week we can actually operate. It'll depend on how fast the moving happens.
Right.
Good. Looking forward to that.
We should send notes to some of the people from the other counties that let us tour theirs.
Oh, yeah. It's a great idea.
It'd be interesting. You know, that, that one in Washington County gave us a ton of information.
Oh, she was outstanding, yeah.
But other ones would be interested to also to see, because you're, you know, now you're the newest and the brightest and the best, so they'd probably be interested to see what we're doing.
I'll definitely reach out to-
The newest.
About that?
The assuredly the newest.
Oh, the brightest.
Oh, for what we saw, yes.
I'll definitely reach out to Ann Marie Banfield over in Marion County. I toured her facility, I don't know how many times, so I definitely owe her at least, uh, some cookies or something.
There you go.
And they have, they have budget complications now, I believe.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, well, Marion County-
Oh, Marion County in general, yes.
Yes, so I'm sure it's trickle-down. Anyway, great.
I'm also supportive, so.
Good.
Comes up, comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Ah, public health discussion now, an update.
George Conway Health Services.
So, first I'd like to just kind of kick this off by, um, setting the context, and as cases of the coronavirus, or this, the new novel coronavirus, which we're calling COVID-19, that's how you'll hear me, hear me refer to it, is COVID-19. Um, and as those cases have risen, not just around the world, but with the recent cases related to, um, within our country and in the US, or in the US and in Oregon, um, number of calls to public health and demands on public health are naturally increasing, so, um, so I, I'm pleased to be here to kind of update you on what we are doing, and I was asked to, to, uh, share with you kind of what we are currently doing to respond and prepare. One of the first points I want to make is the situation is dynamic and changing, and it was changing by the day, now it can be changing hourly. So, that's the context in which we are working in. Um, the first challenge we've had is messaging, and I want to communicate that we still have a high rates of the flu and influenza in Deschutes County, and it's out there in our community and it's creating some confusion and some excitement because it is very closely correlated. So, I've given you in your packet, three pieces of information. The first is just a background information about coronavirus and COVID-19, and I'll talk you through that. The second packet is with the diagram is what we're doing in, within Deschutes County to prepare, and the third is our current update of the current situation and what we're So, a big piece of this has been communication. Again, there hasn't been a lot known about this virus, therefore initially there wasn't a lot of information to get out there, and that's been one of the frustrations. Um, a lot has not been known. Um, there's an increasing amount of information now, and some of it is misinformation, and so we're wanting to address that. As, uh, an effort to address that, Monday morning, we stood up or initiated the Central Oregon Emergency Information Network. A couple of the commissioners came and did a tour of that Monday night and saw the first materials to come out of that group. Um, and the first handout, again, is to differentiate between regular flu influenza, which we are seeing a lot of, and the COVID virus, uh, COVID-19 virus and the difference. The second page is one of the first documents that was created by the Central Oregon, um, Emergency Information Network, and it shows, um, the partners in each of these agencies, public health, the city, the county, have all contributed, the hospital have, um, public information officers that they have, uh, assigned or dispersed to this group that's convening every day to sort of sort through all the information, to do fact-checking and to organize our community information so it's consistent, it's consolidated, and it's easy to find, and that there's information specific to, to Deschutes County and our region. Um, so the partners are, are key, and, um, it's been a very helpful process to get some of that information organized. So, the goal of this group, which we also call the JIC, you'll hear us say the JIC, which is the Joint Information Center, the goal of this group is rather than all of these agencies trying to prepare, um, and, and sort through all of the information, that we maximize our resources by pulling together and working together and dividing our duties to get this information organized and consolidated and out and in centralized location. Uh, so, Monday afternoon, we had the tour, and again, it's, this, this JIC is a tri-county communication center, so it isn't just Deschutes County, it is also, um, for our region, it has fire, EMS, schools, and, um, various other partners, as you can see. Um, Monday, or, um, so the first, uh, materials have been shared. Other benefits of the Central Oregon, um, Information Center or the JIC is their researching, consolidating, and fact-checking, checking the information to make sure we have the most accurate information available to our providers, the public agencies, and the community. We also want to have a unified, common message, which reduces, um, confusion, and we want the best available information out there. We also wanted, again, have a source for local data and information. We are, you'll notice that a lot of the materials, we are using links rather than document, downloaded documents, and there is a reason for that because of this being a dynamic situation and changing pretty rapidly, we want to make sure that the most current information is available, so by providing the links, when they're updated elsewhere, the links take you to the updated materials. So, the bottom two, uh, page two lists resources, we've been getting that information out. So, it has the Central Oregon Emergency Network website, which has a lot of our information. It also has a link to our Deschutes County Health Services and Public Health website, um, OHA state website, uh, the CDC website, and then there is, the 211 system has been activated. Uh, there is some confusion in the community about 211. It is not for medical advice or information at this time, it's just for general information about the COVID-19, um, so we're trying to get the word out there. For example, yesterday, some folks called and ended up being referred to me. So, we're trying to figure, you know, work out those channels of, um, referral and communication.
We shouldn't all just give out your cell phone number for any situation.
We're trying to prepare. Um, the other document that they prepared, which is really helpful, and they took the best of OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, and they took the best of CDC and created this document that the schools are using, I mean, all of the other agencies in our region are using to educate about what it is, how to prevent it, what are the symptoms, um, how severe is it, um, when to seek medical advice, how to protect myself from COVID-19, how is it being treated, and how can I stay up to date, and where can I stay up to date? So, these are the general information about the COVID-19, and also, again, the point being that we have a lot of flu out there, so people are getting concerned, and in order to be tested for COVID-19, they need to see their healthcare provider first to rule out that it isn't some other condition. Um, so that's a really important piece of this because people are thinking that because they have influenza, that therefore they have COVID-19, and that's not necessarily the case.
Well, and can you say something about the dynamic of, I want to be tested, even though, you know, maybe having traveled internationally, you don't have the, kind of the, uh, logic path of needing to get tested, because I think we've already seen that too.
Yes, and the challenge is there are limited tests. The good news is Oregon now has test kits. Uh, they are currently being, um, done at the Oregon Health Authority. We are, public health is not, are being contacted to be tested, so that we're also being called because the public thinks that we have testing kits and we can test. Our CD line is meant for providers to contact us. There's an algorithm that's been, that's been provided to all, um, of our providers in the area to determine for themselves whether or not they meet the criteria, they then contact us. We then contact OHA to get approval to have the test sent to them. Um, so that is the current process.
So, there's a criteria, questions, a very specific path.
Actually, if I could add, that currently, there's still a major constraints on the number of tests available. Oregon has been allocated 80 per day kits, uh, by the Centers for Disease Control. We're hoping that that will grow substantially by the weekend. Currently, the, in order to be tested, the people have to be, uh, seriously ill to the point of being hospitalized, uh, or, and/or having had a, a known contact or traveled to one of the affected areas. We would like, as soon as possible, to test anyone that presents with what we call an ILI, influenza-like illness, so fever, uh, runny nose, cough, sore throat. I think it, it will be a long time before we would be allocating time and public treasure to be, uh, testing worried, well, people.
Yeah.
So, we want, we want to dissuade, uh, if, if not actively dissuade, just that, that's not really on the horizon. One of the things that is on the horizon though is that in the long run, we want to test as many of the people that have been ill as possible so that we have an idea of how common the virus is and how widely spread it is, and I think there'd be a big effort to do that in the next few weeks.
So, that system will build out over time, but right now, there's criteria for specific testing.
There's also a push for the FDA to do a very rapid approval for what some people are calling do-it-yourself kits, which is the academic institutions and, and, uh, local, uh, industry that are already working in gene technology like CRISPR and can quickly develop kits. I think in the long run, that's not the best way to do it, but in the short run in an emergency, that's, that's a good thing to be doing.
Yep.
So, here's what, go, go ahead.
Can I follow up on what you're kind of talking about, Dr. Conway? Um, so in our county, I, we haven't had any incidences yet, right? That we're aware of, no cases. Are, are we preparing then by getting, so it sounds like the kits are all at OHA, which is in Salem? Do we have any kits in our county?
The, the state lab is in Hillsborough.
Okay, well, Hillsborough then, and so do we have any kits in our county currently?
No.
We don't. They're preparing, we hope that that will soon be available at St. Charles, but it has not happened yet. Again, it's a rapidly changing, so in the next hour, those criteria could change, and we could have access locally for those tests.
Let me just walk through this.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so we don't have the diagnostic kits here. We do have a large supply of the swabs to swab the nose and the mouth. So, we have the collection materials here and the wherewithal is set up to gather those per protocol and send them. And the current arrangement is we, those each day have to be ready for the courier in the afternoon. They go to Hillsborough and we will receive, we're assured that we'll receive a test result no later than the close of business the next day.
So, any, and so what I'm hearing you say is that if people have the flu or cold symptoms that they think are serious and they, and they want to get tested, someone at the hospital, is it also at doctors' offices that are doing it?
So, right now, um, clinics or a hospital or, uh, private physicians-
Yeah.
-can submit tests, but the testing criteria, once again, right now, are people that are either so ill that they're hosp, that require a hospitalization, or they're clinically ill and have, or either named contact or been in one of the high-risk areas.
Okay.
But as I said, we're hoping, CDC is hoping to disseminate up to a million kits direct from manufacturer this weekend or early next week, so we're hoping that that will be, uh, if you will, relaxed, to be able to, uh, start testing anyone that presents with an ILI or influenza-like illness, which is a-
Now, including in our jurisdiction.
It's a well-worn, well-established area for testing, that we're current, we would currently test those folks with an influenza panel, so we want to keep testing them with an influenza panel and add the test for coronavirus as soon as it's available, but that won't address the people with, oh, am I, could I have the coronavirus just because they're anxious? the people, "Oh, am I, could I have the coronavirus?" just because they're anxious, and I don't think we want to get into that.
But I'm just interested in the what-ifs, and so if, you know, and if people ask us, well, you know, because people immediately say it now, everybody says it, if you cough twice, oh, you, and in families, I notice it, I mean, it's immediately talked about, but it...
Bear in mind, I'm applying that criteria, so if we have, let's say that if and when, heaven forbid, we do have a case locally, the people that are around them, that we would ask to follow, ask their physicians to follow them, if they became ill, they would be clinically ill and be a named contact, so they would be eligible to be tested, so it's not a, it's not a, it's not a stone-hearted approach, but it is, it's in a way rationed right now, because it's very difficult to scale up that kind of difficult process.
And the extent of testing is swabbing, and then sending the swabs in, and those are diagnosed as...
Standard is a nasopharyngeal, nasal and a pharyngeal swab.
They'll send it to the state, and then the state, if they find it positive, they call it presumptive, and they send that to the CDC to be confirmed, and when it's confirmed, then we have a case.
The other thing that we're hoping for is that maybe in the next month, that there will be some sort of calorimetric rapid test, it's just for screening, it's not confirmatory, they'll be able to be done in a doctor's office, like the rapid tests for flu and certain other pathogens like staph, that'll just change color, it wouldn't be enough to start your course of treatment and whatnot, but it'd be enough to know whether or not it's worth doing the more elaborate test.
Thanks for walking through that.
Quick question.
So the flu that's actually currently we're suffering from, and there's an easy test to tell if you have that?
Yes, and that needs to be ruled out.
Right.
And to actually not just tell if you have that, but whether it's A or B in the subtype, some of them are more aggressive than others.
Okay, and so what are the numbers right now for Deschutes County for the current flu, A and B?
I did not get that information from Jenny before I...
It is on our website, we post it weekly. Dr. Faith assembles those numbers weekly, there was a release at the, closed business Friday, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I just know that it's really impacting children, from what I've heard, so...
Yeah, we're at the tail end of what's been a relatively bad flu season, not remarkably bad, but a relatively bad flu season, it was actually a little late to start, and that's one of the things that makes responding to this new virus very complicated, because there's sort of a jumping to assuming that it's a new thing, rather than just the tail end of what's been a relatively, both belated but relatively strong flu season.
So in addition...
But it's nothing like when we lost 80,000 people from the flu that we have, you know, in 2017 and 18, I mean, that was, that was a...
Across the country.
Yeah, across the United States.
That was a very...
That was a terrible flu season.
And it's not as bad as the H1N1 in the fall of 2009, that was an animal variant, mercifully, it didn't, wasn't a raging epidemic, but there were a lot of cases at the first peak.
Okay, so people need to, like, check that flu out first if they don't feel really well.
Madam Chair, I had a follow-up question for Hillary. I was just curious, when OHA sends for further testing to the CDC, what do they send, do they actually send a sample, or?
They send a sample.
Okay, just curious.
They send a sample, and they send the peaks and the information from how it was read, as well as what the control results were for the testing controls. Because the CDC is also, in addition to reconfirming, is providing quality control feedback to each of the state laboratories.
So this is a good example of where public health is trying to do its regular job, which we have our epidemiologist who's still doing the flu reports, but we've also had her now doing daily updates on the COVID-19, because that's the hot topic right now, and there's a lot of interest in it, so we will make sure, I know that she's done the flu report, I just, I will get that information to you. The other thing to keep in mind is, right now, the way the testing is being processed is through your local public health department, so we, again, we need to keep the CD line, the communicable disease line, open for providers for those kinds of assistance. In addition, the communicable disease line is still addressing, whether it be sexually transmitted disease, chlamydia, syphilis, gonorrhea, or other communicable diseases, TB, that line is for that purpose as well, and that business continues as usual, so those are just some things to keep in mind. Leading into that, so this is what COVID-19 is, so COVID-19 is similar to the flu, while we don't yet have a vaccine, the same every day, universal precautions to help stop the spread of germs are what we're asking people to do, it hasn't changed, that should continue, such as frequent, frequent hand washing, and last night, we got the instructions about making sure there's friction, hot water is preferred, but if you don't have it, that friction and good soap is sufficient, then if you are in an area where someone is infected with either the flu or some other illness, you know, following that up with a disinfectant, or if you don't have soap, using hand sanitizer is a good alternative. Wipe down your surfaces, so that's one of the things I'm really grateful to the county, your county facilities, is distributing disinfecting wipes to all of our county departments, and we're starting to set up hand sanitizing stations and signage in all of our lobbies and entryways, so those are some of the good things that are happening. Our environmental health services, because we were fielding a lot of calls from people about the products, and are they sufficient for COVID-19, they're developing some education materials that will be sent to the JIC, so that everybody has that information, and it will be available region-wide, so that's, as they come in, we're developing our materials. The other thing that people can do is get their flu shot, it's still available, it still makes a difference, so I really want to put that out there. And then for all people with the flu, or who end up having COVID-19, thankfully, we don't have that yet, but are not sick enough to be hospitalized, we're asking that people follow those CDC guidelines and self-quarantine, so they don't spread that illness to others.
I noticed that the isolation is, there's a range, like 14 days plus, they're not quite sure if 14 is enough, is that right?
The materials that we've seen, and Dr. Conway, you may have more current, it's been two to 14 days for quarantine, but again, it depends on when they think they were exposed, some people know, some people don't, so always err on the side of caution.
That's, that's the waiting period for onset of clinical illness, so somebody could become ill day 13, and then be ill, and stay ill for quite a while after that. And that there is, they keep testing that parameter, if they find people that the only known exposure was two and a half weeks ago, then they'll extend that, but currently, there's very little evidence for that.
So the next packet I want to refer to is along with the diagram on it, to share with you, kind of what we're, what else we're doing to prepare. There are two tracks, and on the far left is the internal things that we're doing to prepare with the Deschutes County Health Services, and it's our continuity of operations plan, we pulled that out, we're implementing, for example, what to do if we start having employees that are sick, what to do if an employee has a spouse that's ill, or has the COVID-19, what is our protocol? If we start having to deploy nurses from other programs to help with the response and contact tracing, what do we do to continue operations? Those kinds of things are happening internally, our lead for that is Chris Wyler, with me from Public Health supporting that, and Janice Garceau from Behavior Health supporting that internal effort, working on talking points, which we've given to all of our front desk staff, along with information they can provide the public, so that's the internal piece. We're preparing and contingency planning, if there's an uptick in cases, or if there's an uptick in illnesses, every agency should have a continuity of operations plan or a COOP. I know county administration has been working with all of our departments to make sure that we have that, we have received calls from some clinics and some community providers that want public health, are asking for public health assistance in developing that, that is not something we have the capacity to do. That said, we do know where to refer them to the CDC website, to be able to get samples and materials to help them develop their own plan, so that's one of the things that we, there's some misunderstanding about the role of public health and what do we do. The other thing we're getting calls about is protective equipment, we do not have a stockpile in local public health of protective equipment, personal protective equipment, which is masks, or gowns, or whatever we might need, and we have that for our own staff. Right now, we do not have any clinics or providers that we're aware of that have a shortage, everybody's been able to get their supply, but the vendors are limiting them to just the stock that they normally would order, they can't order more than that, because there is demand on those resources. The other thing is, the state, Oregon Health Division, has a significant supply of those PPEs, or personal protective equipment and masks, available, and they're developing a decision matrix, so if we start to see cases, and we have clinics that are running out of that equipment, we will have a mechanism to be able to request those from the state. The other thing is, because we are a state that's beginning to see cases, our governor has sent a letter to Vice President Pence requesting to have available additional PPEs or personal protective equipment if we need it, so there are some things getting in place that are, that's helping to address that need. The other thing that's really great is, again, we have a really strong, and I think the commissioners that were at the JIC on Friday, on Monday night, saw that, we have very strong partners that are working together on this, our hospitals in December saw this trend happening, and they have, you know, ordered a significant supply for their organization to make sure they have that equipment, as has our EMS folks, so we're in good shape in that regard. Should we start to get cases, that could change.
If I could add about masks, there's a lot of concern about masks, there's been a lot of purchasing, and ostensibly some hoarding, the main use of the masks is really just two things, one is if you have an ill person that's going around other people, it's a good way to contain the droplets from their cough and sneeze, the other one is for healthcare workers that are providing services, because they're going to have so many opportunities to be exposed, there's very little, if any, benefit to wearing a mask in public as a preventive measure, the main way that the disease is transmitted beyond being directly coughed on or sneezed on, which the absolute maximum distance would be six feet, is by touching surfaces and touching your face, your mouth, your eyes, your nose, and basically frequent hand washing, and trying not to touch too many surfaces is a much better protective measure than masking, and masking just isn't really, isn't really either necessary or indicated.
So that's what we've done to date within the community and within our own organization, Behavior Health, Public Health, to prepare. The middle column is, over the weekend, as we saw cases on Friday night, or a positive case on Friday night, we formally, over the weekend, implemented our Incident Command system, and then on Monday, formally implemented it and began to put people in place to prepare for that. This is our external response preparation, which is different from our internal, they are linked, and they do talk, so it's a little bit different, and I want to walk through that with you, so you understand what we are doing. The purpose of the Incident Command is really to minimize exposure and the spread of disease, that's the primary focus of this group. The lead on here, you'll see the agency administrator, senior officials, is Dr. Conway and Dr. Fawcett, and Dr. Conway is directing not only our ICS that we've stood, that we've implemented in public health, but also is the policy guidance for the community and for the county administration and key stakeholders, and this is dealing with things like school closures, what level triggers school closures, or where we would cancel community-wide events, those kinds of things, and I'll let him talk more about what that means, and what the meeting that he had this morning. The other thing that we've done is we met with our county legal and our court system to review quarantine guidelines, and what is allowed and not allowed, and what those processes are, so they are prepared, should we need to go there or have to do that. The ICS that we have, we are trying to make sure that we have backups for every position that we have assigned, because if this ramps up, people are going to get tired, and we want to make sure we have that depth to make sure that we take care of our people, that we are able to do an adequate response, and so you have, the incident commander is Heather Kaisner, the Public Health Advancement and Protections Manager, and I am her deputy in that command, she's got the expertise and training, I have some, but not quite to the extent that she does. So underneath that is the liaison officer, and we just got that yesterday morning, because of all the calls we're getting from clinics and businesses from the community with questions. So Pamela Ferguson, who is a nurse and also our manager for Healthy People and Families and Direct Services, has become the liaison for the public in answering their questions, her alternate is Sarah Holloway, which is also a nurse supervisor within public health. So they're working with the clinics, the businesses, long-term care facilities, which has a particular vulnerable population, so they're providing guidance. The second is our PIO, Morgan Emerson, we have Whitney Hale as a backup, and Julian Repman, and I talked about the Central Oregon Information Network, which we have now deployed, Morgan and Whitney are both serving in that group, but she's also having the daily meetings, we may go to twice a day, depending on what happens, but right now, they're daily meetings, to make sure that we are all coordinating our efforts. The JIC manager is Julian Repman, who has been with the Ben Lepine School Districts and is their PIO. So underneath that, there are four areas, and I just quickly want to make sure you understand what those are. The operations focus is today, they are the doers, they're making contacts with providers' call, they're helping to screen out who needs to be tested, who doesn't, is the liaison linked to the state OHA. The team right now is Jill Johnson is the lead, with Debbie George, who's a nurse in public health also, backing her up, and then we have two nurses. So we need to have a contingency plan, because of this, if there's a surge and we have more cases, and I'll talk about our role, it gets very labor-intensive, so we have a plan, and we've been working with networking and coordinating with Nathan Garabee over at the sheriff's office, to get resources, we have nurses to deploy within, so that's that group, they're the immediate response needs, they're helping with continuing to maintain the CD line and response, and preparing for surge capacity.
So on that operations part, is, are those all county employees?
They are at this time.
And so you're saying they deploy, meaning if you, someone has...
So right now, they are, they are, some of their duties, like the CD line, they're maintaining, but their focus is on, is preparing for this response and operation, the day-to-day response, so every day...
The CD line is communicable disease line?
The communicable disease line, correct, for providers.
Additional responsibility, or whatever, okay.
Yes, and so right now, it is, they are county, but we have prepared to pull in additional county employees, but also community members to help if this, if there is an uptick in cases. The second group is the planning, their focus, and that's, again, a partnership with the sheriff's office, they've loaned us Ashley Volz, their focus of her group is tomorrow, what are our next steps, what are the things we need to be doing that are, that we see coming, that we need to be prepared for. She has a Situation Unit leader who's doing the daily updates, she's our epidemiologist, making sure that we compile our data. Finance is focused on the resources we are required to track, the time and resources that are being used for this effort, there may be reimbursement from FEMA, but not for internal or some other activities, but we are required to track that, so staff hours, purchases, and then our finance has already stepped up and developed a special code for us to use to charge expenses to that line, so it makes it easier to track. Logistics is Chris Wyler, and the focus is on equipment and supplies and resources, he's the getter, and so basically, they're the doers, thinkers, getters, payers, and talkers, that's what those all are. So that's, that's our, that's kind of what we've done. The second thing...
Real quick, on the top, ICS 207, is that a type of incident or an incident number?
An Incident Command 207 is a particular, this is following Incident Command protocol and guidelines, which we adhere to, and so that's what this...
The 207 is a type of Incident Command?
Yeah, Department of Homeland Security, FEMA lexicon.
Yeah, because I mean, I understand, yeah, because Incident Command is what we have in a forest fire also, so this is a health branch of operations.
Well, they all basically follow a similar structure.
Yep, great. Great.
So I count 16 or 17 people, maybe I'm not right on the number chart, but they're, like Commissioner DeBonne said, with Incident Command and fires, they, those are set up when we have a fire. That's what they set up, and sometimes they bring in multiple teams. This is prepping for the, for, well, some of it's telling people what to do now and how to prep, threading of information, but there, but this is what's in place if the disease comes to, shoots County or Central Oregon, the three counties.
Well, and we want to be sure that it's not only in place, but that it's organized and set up. And right now, most of these people are still responsible for doing their day-to-day jobs, but part of their job right now is to figure out who will do theirs if we do have a case or more that requires follow-up, in which case each of these people will be expected to just work on this, and they'll be protected.
And there may come a point, because part of this starts to get out of public health jurisdiction, is that's where Nathan sets up an ICS that's a community-wide, that then goes beyond what we're currently doing to prepare in public health. This is for our initial response to the medical community, so that, you know, the deputies aren't being tapped into that at the Sheriff's Office or other resources, but we have to have a place for people to go now for information and response.
The thing that we shouldn't underestimate is that, although we don't have any cases here, because we do have some in Oregon, and there is a number of people being tested and followed around the state, that there's a very high demand already on us for public information, planning, outreach, coordination. So most of the people listed here are already very, very busy with this.
The room was full on Monday evening with everyone at their command, you know, Ben PD, Sheriff's, I mean, you know, Creek County's Health Officer, Mariel. I mean, everyone was there, and it's, it's always good, and as Representative Health said, we are very, very collaborated in our response. I mean, we want to be ready, just in case we need to be ready.
There is one other thing I should probably point out, and that is that, but per agreement with the other counties, the JIC, the Information Center, is now jointly operated and representing the three counties. The ICS that we've stood up so far is, is within our county, but the other two counties are considering this, and indeed, one of them is also considering a declaration of an emergency to provide, to free up some resources. I think if we have an outbreak in the region, I think it'll probably, the formal response then will be organized at a inter-agency tri-county regional level, and the default would be something like the MAC that Nathan Garabee managed during the eclipse, and then that we ended up using actually for public health purposes during the wildfire smoke that ensued.
So I want to emphasize, this is not new to public health. We have had other situations with Ebola, SARS, MERS, where we've had to do similar preparations. So we're, we pull those out, we learn from them, and we improve it the next time. So this is not new. The other thing that's not new is CD response and in communicable disease response and what are, what we do. The other thing we're finding is that people don't understand fully what public health's role is. So the next pages kind of get into that. You've seen this communicable disease as part of our Public Health 101, kind of a snapshot review, kind of where we are with just that piece, the difference between our role and our healthcare providers. So I won't go over that. But the new piece of information for you that I think is really important is this public health contract tracing, because that is the role of public health. We are, before this, we are responsible for, CDC lets the Oregon Health Authority know if there's an individual that's returned from China that lives in our, our area or region, and they do something called PUM, which is a person under monitoring. They do not have symptoms, but we have a reason to believe that they may have been exposed. So the role of your local public health department is to monitor, that's daily check-ins, those individuals. So that's before this event. The second, then, if we do have a case, and this is generally the roadmap of how this occurs, provider identifies someone, we do send it to testing, they find that we have a positive case. Then we kick into full gear, and this is when it gets, the work really starts for public health in terms of the labor that we need. So what happens is a contact shows symptoms, they are isolated, tested, and provided care. The patient is asked about their contacts, and public health's responsibility is to do what's called contact tracing, which is what this diagram illustrates. And it's just, the contacts are made, they are asked to, at this time, self-quarantine, and then we pick them up as someone that we are person monitoring until they are past that 14-day mark. And that cycle repeats until there are no new patients. The second one is the contact shows symptoms and is isolated and tested, patient, we ask the patient about their contacts. Person may already have self-quarantine, they don't know who they have been in contact, whether they've been in contact with anything, who they may have contracted the virus from. So that's kind of where that track goes, so we continue to monitor, but we don't have any contact tracing in that case, so there's not a lot we can do. And the third potential is a missed contract, missed contact. They may be spreading the disease, they forget to tell us, or we can't reach them. We're required by law to contact anyone who's supposed to be monitored or who has been in contact with someone who has been exposed or has the illness, to at least contact them three times, and we have to document that. So we try our best to get a hold of people to, again, to mitigate and prevent the spread of disease. And then contact shows no symptoms after a certain number of days, then they're not at risk for developing. This is labor-intensive. Again, the goal is to prevent the spread as best we can, and then to monitor the situation in cases as they arise.
There is, so one thing is, has changed, which is while there may be times that we will send people out in the field to interview people that are ill or contacts, because of the very high prevalence of mobile phone ownership, most of this can now be carried out using a mobile phone rather than 30 or 40 years ago, when I was first involved in these things, you had to send people out, and it was very labor-intensive that way. Now, a lot of the work is, is just an organized follow-up by telephone, and of course, if you have a contact, you can't reach them by phone, then we may need to send a person.
That's what we're doing. Any questions or...
I listened to the call yesterday on the CDC, just so I could have, you know, a little more familiarity with what's going on and the fact that the, what is it, the FDA is doing the testing, that they're the people that are responsible to send out whatever, millions of test kits. And then this morning, I heard that they're, what are, opening it up, where some countries, I guess you can even do like a drive-through and get tested, so...
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet, but...
Well, actually, that's a, there have been a series of questions from the FQHCs, like mosaic here, whether or not people can be tested in their cars.
Right.
And that's, that's one way of isolating it. One of the problems is you may expose by keeping people confined in a car. If there's other people in the car, it may, it may expose them while you're waiting there. The other thing is, I've advised them, ask whether or not their dog bites before they open the door in the car, so.
Yes. Fighting the dog.
Yeah, the last document you have is branded in our Public Health 101 format, but it's a new document you'll be seeing, and it's the one that Jenny Faith, our epidemiologist, is preparing, and it is our COVID-19 response, and this is as of yesterday. The information is already out of date. The, as of March, as of last night, there are 128 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the United States. CDC is the one that provides that information, and they provided it last night. The 90,870 number count of cases is the World Health Organization, and we expect them to update that number this evening. But again, we've got these different agencies that are providing data that don't always do it at the same time, but this is, again, what we're doing to respond and resources, and then the current snapshot, so you'll be seeing this.
Okay, has anybody said anything differently than when the weather gets warmer? Originally, I heard that on one news flash, that, that perhaps when the weather does get warmer, that a virus like this wouldn't know, I mean, we don't know enough about it yet, do we?
Wait, the correct answer is we don't know.
Right. Okay, well, that was a positive thought. You know, maybe, who knows, right?
But I mean, it's being looked at. One of the reasons influences referred to shorthand as seasonal flu rather than the fancier names is that between the people having dry narys, dried noses, and spending more time inside, both of which encourage the propagation of flu, people touching their nose after they've touched people or surfaces, that flu does have a seasonality, but we don't know yet whether this disease will have that or not.
Okay, thank you.
Do you all receive the HAN update? So you're getting the daily update?
Health Alert Network.
Health Alert Network updates about counts and numbers, so we want to make sure that you get this. We have Jenny.
Who would it come from?
It's...
OHA.
OHA.
OHA forwards. It's a, it's a federal system that CDC populates and OHA.
I don't recognize it. You know, talking about, do we get it as an email?
Yeah, Jenny is taking that information and doing a snapshot that will be in a similar format, so we'll make sure you start getting these, because it has a snapshot of what's happening today, what's happening in Oregon, what's happening in the United States, and what's happening in the world, and cases and deaths. And so it's just a good, to keep you updated of what's happening. And eventually, if we have cases here, that will be added, we'll hopefully not.
Kind of a bigger question, you know, it seems like a lot of people are doing a lot of things to prepare for this, and a lot of citizens are shopping. And apparently Costco had its biggest day ever over the weekend, and stock's up $10, $10 or whatever. I mean, it's, you know, and I've heard people I know have said of the things they've bought, and it's like, I don't know what to, you know, and I guess they would, might look at people like us just to know whether that's smart or not. I haven't personally, yeah, so...
There was a run on Costco particularly in Portland, is during one of the briefings, I think it was somebody from OHA, said it was prudent to have two weeks' food and other supplies on hand. I think that's even...
That's good for the markets.
I made the mistake of going to buy a cake at Costco on Saturday, and I...
Long line.
When I got there, I had to return something first, and I said to the counter lady, I said, "Well, it's good to see there's such a robust consumer market in the face of an epidemic." She said, "Oh, no, no, there's been a line around the block in Portland, and that people were buying..." And then when I looked, people had an awful lot of everything. So that's, that, this is partially one of the reasons why we have to be very careful about messaging, and that's...
Yeah.
...the reasons why we're talking about masks, because if everybody thinks they need an inventory of masks, which is not true, then there aren't any, so.
That's, and so that's, I guess, what I'm looking at, because we're public officials, would, what are we, you know, if we have a doctor's appointment, I thought about that, should you wear, should you wear a mask to a doctor's appointment? Well, because you're just not sure.
If you're sick.
If you're sick.
If you're coughing and sneezing, that would be a very nice thing to do.
But if you're just doing something else.
If you don't have...
Yeah.
As far as food and whatnot, we certainly will be very mindful if we ask for people to be self-quarantining or confining themselves, to make sure that they have adequate food, and if they don't have that, then that's one of the, one of the supply chain issues we have to deal with.
That is partially why that message came out, is that if your, if your family does end up getting sick, or you end up getting sick, to have that two-week supply available, which if you're doing good emergency preparedness practices, you should have anyway, but it's more just so that, if you end up being sick, then someone else should go get those supplies for you if you don't have them. But that's one of the reasons those guidelines came out.
But when, you know, you have to be conscious that as public officials, if somebody said that in four or five PM in a news conference on Friday, and suddenly the shelves were, you know, stuff was flying off the shelves by the middle of the day on Saturday, it didn't mean that everybody had to let go shopping the next morning, but there isn't much we can do about that, and that's one of the reasons why we have to be very thoughtful about having those things.
Well, I think it is intelligent to make sure you have your pill supply, you know, just in case. And I honestly used to worry for decades about the fact that our light bulbs were made in China. And now that I found out that our medicines are made in China, I'm hoping that one of the unintended and positive consequences of this will be that we will be making more medicine in the United States again, because, you know, a lot of it is out of our control.
So speaking of medications, Dr. Will Berry is also, because of our clientele in behavioral health, is also helping to do some contingency planning around medication for those clients that need it, those medications, because that can be an issue as well. So there's some planning being done around that and actions.
I think Dr. Berry, very busy.
Yes.
Well, and I do support being strategic about this, you know, how much time we're taking just to go back and forth here, too. So let's use a Board of Commissioners' public meeting for its highest and best value. Please feedback when, you know, if things are getting more time-constrained or whatever, how, how can we proceed as a group?
I think it's important to, as our leaders, to make sure you help the public understand the public health role.
Yeah.
And then we're also getting questions of, what are you doing? What's public health doing? Helping to get the message out there of what we are doing, because we are, it's not like we're sitting on our hands.
And as, you know, counties are the public health authorities across the country, and we do have professional staff that have, you know, been in place for many years for this case, so, and not everybody, you know, this is where it happens, in partnership with the hospitals and the other providers.
So today, Mr. Anderson will pass along a request that we're going to form an executive council, and it's our hope that an elected official from, from among you will join that, and then if we extend this to the, to the tri-county area and one of your colleagues, and participate actively in that discussion.
So yeah, that would be the, kind of the real-time information.
Senior leader, leaders of other public agencies, the school districts, the sheriffs.
That's that top box, and Dr. Conway's heading that up, so getting the leaders from the schools, from the county, different entities to plan for those bigger decisions.
Further answer to your question is that helping us disseminate and necessary correct public information would be very helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
And directing people.
And then there are certain thresholds where if there's an emergency declaration or whatever, some of which need to be done in consultation with or, or under your authority.
Yeah, and then that becomes, yeah, the governing body's decision space for declarations of emergency.
And it seems quite timely that we had the CDC here last, what, April, for that eight-hour seminar on, like, emergencies. So what can we do?
So keep your prize.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you for the, for the very thorough analysis of what we're doing.
It's important you know what we're doing.
Right.
If people are wondering.
Yes, and you are public health. See, you can't retire now.
Uh-huh.
You're having too much fun. So we...
So I'm supportive of, you know, generally going maybe for 45 minutes, taking a break and coming back, because I know we have kind of a lot of just loose-end type items for the...
Can we do it right now?
Today that we can do. Yeah, what I'm saying, let's, let's go through as much as we can.
Yes. Oh, good. Okay. Let's start on our loose ends, then.
Commissioners, we have several executive sessions that we were planning with you, which we would normally do upstairs. We do have a few other items also, so it's your pleasure on whether you'd like to discuss a few other items down here or upstairs, or go upstairs, start executive sessions. It's your, your choice.
Gosh.
I've got a couple just other items just to lay out here.
Okay, we can do the other items.
So Monday, I was able to attend a Bend Economic Development Advisory Board meeting, so there's a group getting together for that. There's an update on visit Bend quarterly numbers for the end of the year, so it's the end of last year, last year's quarter. So, you know, just like Deschutes County, the, the numbers are up. They're seeing hotel demand real flat, but the occupancy and demand of the bed and breakfast, accessory dwelling unit rentals go away. accessory dwelling unit rentals go way up. So it's just interesting to hear what's going on there. And switching modes from curated, you know, from just tourism to curated experiences and safe and desirable experiences. So it's interesting to see the, you know, Visit Bend and the industry working at really kind of load-balancing facilities, sites of interest, and experiences in central Oregon. And that's what we hear with the Forest Service, when they're, the wilderness permitting they were talking about, it's just the different things. That is going through the whole industry right now. So just a quick note on that. Next topic, we had a request for East Oregon County's Association Intergovernmental Agreement Review, so that was an email that we all got, just acknowledging that I had asked Dave to kind of look at a, you know, what is this IGA, the words in it, it's a 190 is our partnership, so there may be an update cycle going on that. So just laying that out there, just kind of making it the official business of what we're doing.
Would you like that to come back for formal?
Well, it's just, just kicking it off. So it'll find its time to come back. Those are the two items I brought.
Okay. On Thursday, I was in Sun River and did learn of the 30,000 building, 30,000 square foot building that has 30 apartments in it, that is actually empty right now, and the possibility of that being used somewhere in our housing problem. You know, like, you know, finding out why that isn't being rented, et cetera.
So you're referring to the.
The one next to the Catholic Church?
Yep, yep, and that's our parish, you know, that was built by the parish, and then it transferred hands a few times. It is available for sale. But, so, yeah, it's a resource out there, and, you know, it's an interesting opportunity that we need to figure out. As I say, it's changed hands, it's been a sister's academy for youth girls, and it's been a drug rehab facility. It was built as a, an apartment for, you know, aging adults, 30 apartments, kind of built into a common living setting, and it just hasn't found its financial fit in the community, and that's been the big problem.
I know, and now.
Because the church couldn't hold on to it the way the business was going to work there, that's why it got sold.
Right, but it's 30 apartments that are empty, so.
Oh, I know all about it, yep.
Isn't it your church?
Yeah.
Yes. So that's, that's.
But as I say, in the last few years, it's changed hands, it has been used, so it's come on and off, and right now is that, that kind of point in time where it's unused, available for sale, and what is the next step?
Right, and it's owned by people out of state, so, anyway. So that was interesting. So, okay.
I don't know if I reported back after we had the meeting on the Veterans Village with some of the neighbors in that area, and it was a good meeting. Have I reported back on that?
No, not officially.
And it was a good meeting, we had quite a bit of comments on it, inquiries about, you know, people obviously, or not surprisingly, were supportive of the concept of the Veterans Village, but wondering about the impacts that neighborhood. And I think one of the things we heard a lot about that I wasn't aware of was the impact of our other facilities that are already there on those neighborhoods with regard to people going through the neighborhoods, maybe on release from the jail, from parole, probation, or juvenile, and I thought that was something we should, it's a separate issue, but I didn't know that was a problem to people that lived there, and I always thought it was something we maybe could talk with the sheriff's office and some of the other departments to see what does happen that way, because there, the largest concerns about the Veterans Village really were about people ending up in the neighborhoods, I think, and then property value effects, but I think the neighborhood, people in neighborhoods was a primary concern. So there is a, we're, they're working right now to try to set a meeting of all the different parties involved to talk about the future. I saw the, I guess it was a memo that maybe Tom did or somebody. It seems like the city's still planning to require us to, or somebody to finish that service road, which is a huge number, and so that would be a big, it'd be one of the obstacles, I guess, if we're going to do it, but that would be really something that our city, our colleagues at the city would have to work on more than us, but. And then today, two of the Ben Heroes Foundation board members are on their way to Clarkmas to have a more in-depth interview with the different parties that were involved with that, to see how some of these issues have, you know, been resolved there and dealt with, and so hopefully that'll be a good report next week as well, so. It's very interesting, and still some support for it, so.
Someone in that neighborhood came in and met with me about a month ago, so I told her every time she had a problem to send me a message, and then I would forward, and I've been forwarding it on.
Yeah.
People walk down the middle of the street, yeah, all kinds of things are happening there.
Sit on the curb, yeah.
The warming, yes.
And the warming shelter has had an impact that way, and I.
It was a problem before, but it's a lot worse.
Yeah, and I tried to reassure them that we weren't planning to do the warming shelter again there next year, but somebody needs to get underway pretty soon with where that would be. And I drove by it a couple times recently, and I noticed that outside the warming shelter by three or four in the afternoon, there's people in front of it, adult probation, just hanging out, there's, you know, five or eight people out there talking and packs, and so I don't, and then people, cars in the parking lot look like they're going to use it, it's, and this was a couple days ago when it wasn't particularly, you know, it wasn't freezing cold, it was, but anyway, it's in, so I can see how that is impacting the area. So, anyway, that's kind of my, we had the meeting, and we're moving forward from that, so.
Good. Wonderful. So, is there anything else executive?
Well, Commissioners, just to add to what Commissioner Henderson said, so we had a meeting that both Nick and Peter, who are here, attended, and I phoned in when I was out on the coast week before last to follow up with the city on a range of issues mostly related to the land use entitlements. You know, at that time, we were still looking actively at the House Bill 4001 that had been proposed, that would provide a much clearer path to the ability to site a shelter there, and that's still.
Easier path, right?
Yes. So we're still watching that to see if there's any, any last-minute legislative effort this weekend, but aside that, we're still, the city still has created sort of, you know, their initial take on, on both land use and the other issues, including the road that Phil mentioned. We've got a follow-up meeting scheduled next week, I was going to mention to you all, you know, if one of you would like to participate in that, that would be fine, to follow up on our meeting last. That would include Eric and the Heroes Foundation.
Was that the doodle, or whatever you call that poll thing? Because I saw your name, I'm on it, and your name's on it, where we pick dates that you're available.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I did sign up.
Okay, all right. So hopefully that they'll find a date that works for, you know, for everyone, and we can, you know, I think that is the next step, is to put us and the city and Eric, the Heroes Foundation, together in the same room, so we can talk much more specifically about, you know, who's going to do what, next, next concrete steps necessary to move this forward.
And my thought with regard to the three Commissioners is at some point, when we get a little more information, we have a discussion of, do we each support it, do we, do we not support it, where, you know, what is our role? I think the bigger ask is going to be what the, what city councilors do, and they've told, I've checked on that several times, and I checked with, I did talk to a couple of the city councilors that we had talked about, getting a hold of, and I, I think there is support for the idea among the city, but I don't know whether, how that gets translated to city staff and what the.
Well, and I'll say, I support, and how, so it's going to be X, how much are we going to, how much money are we going to provide? So that's it, because we're always going to say yes, and it's wonderful vision, there's the land use and the cost of development, just to get the right to be able to put those houses there, but it's always going to come down to how much, you know, we're going to support financially.
Yeah. Hopefully, I'll know more by the next week as to what it looks like, and Tom will, too, but, and then we can, we should probably have that discussion more, because they're, they're wondering, you know, if we're committed to it, and it's, and I'm with you on that, and I, I'm troubled if the idea is we have to do this $400,000 service road. It's, I'm not quite sure, it sounds like it's a code-required thing, I'm not sure that it really is a, I'm not sure why it's necessary beyond that, I'm not sure what value it produces for somebody.
Remember, they, I mean, the assumption at one of our work sessions was, well, you're a partner, that means you're going to help pay for this every year. So, I mean, there's some deep discussions about how this is going to be financed.
Well, I'm more into the, we're a partner to get it ready for use.
Yeah, see, that's my thought, too.
But the private, Eric seemed confident that the private sector has the ability to raise funds for operations, so we'll see, but there's also state money apparently available for something like this, and.
Oh, there is.
And so there's lots of things besides us in that, so.
There's definitely state money, so.
The okay on the land and the initial improvements would be things someone would probably look at us for.
Well, and then is there other long-term value in having that street, because it is a right-of-way, which connects to disconnected ends of the road, so is there a long-term reason it makes sense for Deschutes County Public Safety Campus, too?
Were you, would you like to have a follow-up discussion on the AOC and the, I don't know that Whitney's not here, we didn't bring the letter with him, but that could be one that we could do this afternoon, just to kind of set the table, so we have the, can wrap that up. CDD staff is here now, if that's something you'd like to do, the, there was a request on a, for a call-up on a specific land use matter that they're having, handling administratively, if that's something that you'd like to do now.
Sure.
While they're here.
That'd be great.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, for the record, Peter Getowski, Deschutes County Planning Manager, here with Cindy Smith, Associate Planner, Nick LeLac, Community Development Director. Yesterday morning, Cameron Delashman, who represents Thornburg Resort, who has a application into our office for a site, it's a site plan for a golf course, Cindy's currently handling that and is expecting to issue a decision in approximately a week. Cameron called me and stated his respectful request to, to the county to have the board issue an order if the administrative decision approving the site plan was appealed, to allow him to bypass the hearings officer, recognizing that he has a dedicated opponent with Nunzi Gould. I shared with him that I would work through administration and reach out to the board for their respective feedback. A couple of observations, if I may, as you consider this request. This is pretty atypical for an applicant to make a request right out of, out of the gate. As you're well aware, we, the, there's just been a handful of times where the board has, has issued an order like this, certainly with the marijuana industry, that being an emerging industry. There was a decision several years ago to call up administrative decisions that were appealed, to review them, knowing that that was new policy and interpretation of code. To my knowledge, the only other time was with John Shepherd. You know, he went through several applications for a private park. We, he meant, he, with an attorney, recognized that there may be a violation with First Amendment rights pertaining to our Lupa, we attempted to amend it our code. Luba remanded that code, and then getting to the issue of an order, calling it up, we ultimately issued an administrative decision approving the church, the board called that up and ultimately approved that church that was affirmed by the Land Use Port Appeal. So those two examples had specific circumstances associated with them. As I bring it back to Cameron Delashman's request, I certainly think it's important to let the board know that if, as you consider this request, if you, something that you were contemplating, I don't think this would be the last request you would hear from Cameron if, as he diligently tries to vest his resort, and if Nunzi Gould continues to be a determined opponent, I could see this becoming, you know, commonplace for him as he tries to expedite his land use approvals. And then I think it's important to acknowledge that others will, others in the community will discover that there is this option in our procedures code where the board has this ability to call up administrative decisions. To the extent that the board is contemplating this, you know, we could write an order to the best of our ability describing these distinguishing characteristics that separate or acknowledge these extenuating circumstances that compelled the board to consider an order, but I just, I guess bottom line is, you know, this, this can be a slippery slope where parties, you know, that experience contentious applications, and of course, this board is well aware that that happens frequently in Deschutes County, that this could be a, not a precedent, but it could be, you know, an opportunity that others want to try to utilize as they, you know, again, try to entitle their, their proposal. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Nick, or Cindy, on the, on the golf course, but that's, that's why we're here before you very delicately.
Did the Supreme Court make a ruling on the mailing, that, that part of?
That is, has not been heard yet.
It has not, it's still out there.
And I can't recall what date that is. I think Adam Smith, the legal counsel, might have that date, but I don't have that memory.
But they did, they did accept it, though.
Yes, they did, they're going to hear it with one other case.
Right.
And I don't believe, I mean, Dave could provide further context, but unlike the Court of Appeals, the Supreme Court is not bound by a timeline to issue a decision, so it could be several months generously for a decision.
Are they, so I was going to ask that, too, so I assume the golf course is in the Thornburg property boundaries?
Yes.
So doesn't the other case have to be resolved before you could build a golf course there, or what's the connection there?
Well, it, it requires site plan, it's part of the first phase of the tentative plat, it's in one of the open space lots, but I think it can still go forward, a part of it. I mean, the tentative plat has also been, the remand has been sent back up to Luba, so, yeah, it's, and there's.
So you're saying this can go forward, you can approve or not approve an application?
Yeah, and it might be conditioned on the things that have gone before it as well.
Because that's, because we kind of use that argument as to why we went ahead and made rulings on Thornburg, even though there's this pending appeal on the late filing, we don't know if that'll be thrown out or not, this could be, so, yeah. And you're, are you asking us today whether we want to do this, or is it just coming, you're going to ask us this, or it's coming up?
The decision will be issued, Nick LeLac, Deschutes County Community Development Director, for the record, the decision we expect to issue administratively next week, Mr. Delashman has respectfully asked Peter ahead of that decision being issued, because the board has to initiate the review, a call-up, within the appeal period, within the 12-day appeal period, which is why we appreciate Tom bringing this issue to the board now, just so that we can get ahead of that to bring the issue. And I don't, Peter, I think accurately, I mean, completely captured all of the issues we've discussed internally regarding this matter and the potential for others to request a similar path forward.
And I'm just going to add some knowledge that I have, is that Cameron is hoping that once the golf course decision is issued, he's going to turn around and come back with some more applications. So I would be concerned that if he's requesting it for this golf course site plan, will this be requested in the next site plan that I receive?
So we could start the process in almost expectation that this whole proposed destination resort in all phases end up in this situation.
Right, it, can't say it will happen, but there's always that potential to, that it will happen.
What's the, is there a cost at each level? So to file a hearing, how much is the cost for the hearing or hearings officer level? So, file a hearing, how much is the cost for the hearing or hearings officer level?
For the applicant will be paying, there's a hearings officer deposit of $5,000 plus an administrative fee of $500. An appeal is $250, so the applicant has agreed to pay that five, $5,500. And then if there's an appeal, there's $250 for the appellant to pay. And then going up to the board, it's almost $3,000 plus 20% of the original fee.
Again, the applicant has paid, or is it?
The appellant, the appellant pays that.
It depends on how the thing comes out.
Right.
But at the first level.
First level, the applicant is on the hook for that $5,000 if we know it's contentious.
And it, but the applicant could be the appellant. I mean, if it's returned down.
Yes.
You might want to clarify that, that the 250 is just the appeal fee for an administrative decision.
Right, yes.
To appeal a hearings officer's decision, the appellant would pay the 3,000.
Right, yes, thank you, Tom.
At this point, it's not really clear who's paying what money, because we don't know who's going to appeal. And we know who the applicant is, but we don't know who's going to appeal at different levels.
Yeah, Commissioner Henderson, I think, what, just to be clear, I think Cameron, his, his best, well, best outcome would be to have the administrative decision issued and not challenged by Nunzi Gould, who's the only person I believe who per, who's, has, has participated, is that correct?
We have one other interest, or two other interested parties.
Anyway, Ms. Gould is clearly, has, has the reputation for being the determined opponent. To the extent that she appeals for $250, it would be Mr. Delashman's best outcome that the board would issue an order to call up that. The order would be structured so that if it was appealed, that the board would, would agree to, to, to hear that or conduct that hearings proceeding bypassing the hearings officer.
I guess, so we don't need to make a decision today, what we're thinking about. You know, I, I get what you're saying about you don't want to start a, you know, slippery slope of everybody else is going to do it. On the other hand, you know, it seems like so many of our things end up at Luba that, so to me, the hearings officer, we may or may not agree with the hearings officer. So, we're sometimes countering him, sometimes we're not. But it just becomes a bigger body of work for the Luba to look at, it seems like. I mean, at the end, it's just whatever Luba wants. I mean, it's my view of all this stuff now. I mean, how many of our things have been, almost all of our big decisions have been appealed all the way. And I don't like the fact that it gets more, you know, the more expensive it gets, the less broad base of people have the right to exercise their rights, so to speak, but.
Yeah, I think you could, you know, to the extent that the board finds that Mr. Delashman has a, has distinguishing circumstances, given the history, I mean, this is the most litigated land use case, I think, in Oregon's history. I mean, there may be.
Isn't it like 13 years or something?
It's 15.
15 years.
Yeah.
Probably 13, 12, a dozen appeals, counting appeals to Luba and the Court of Appeals. I think that as, as the board contemplates, you know, and I was trying to not to use the word precedent, but I think, you know, Mr. Delashman, as Cindy reiterated, may find that if he's successful with this course of action, he would come forward with similar requests, again, if he had a determined opponent. I would just, you know, acknowledge the, for other applications that are contentious, from a staff perspective, taking it to a hearing with a hearings officer, vets the arguments extremely well. You hear opponents and, and proponents provide their, their, their legal basis for why a decision, why a proposal should or should not be approved. You get interpretation of the code from an independent hearings officer. And then I think to the extent that that elevates for the board's consideration, it's well-vetted. And the board has the ability to step back, certainly to determine if you want to hear it, but also to evaluate some of the nuances that have been raised. And, and, and I just bring that up because, you know, there are benefits to a second hearing. And I think the board can benefit from that as opposed to issues that go straight to a hearing before an elected body. But again, just, that's a broader context. I don't think you necessarily would see that here, because it's so narrow, you know, with, in this case, with it being a golf course. But just, just for your perspective, you know, the Mazamas, the KCDGs, the water ski lakes, those, you know, those issues, even though they can be expensive and they generate a lot of interest, I think sometimes vetting that through a, a multi-tiered public process puts the board in a better position to interpret the code where you can get deference, things of that sort, so.
So, I'm interested in talking offline about this a little bit. But I guess, across that judicial board is what we would be in this matter, correct? And we're talking about a, what is it, the master plan, conceptual master plan? And now this is getting to an application in a specific, so there's like these criteria already for this application on a fully-vetted process that's been appealed back and forth. So, I, I guess, you know, I don't know that it's here right time for now, but can we even get into the substance of this application before we know this decision? Or, you know, that, make this decision? How controversial is laying out a golf course on a conceptual master planned approval? And, because we don't even know, you know, then if it's appealed is what we're talking about. And I don't know, maybe that's not right for right now.
Commissioner, that's a, that's a great question. And I think once the, once the, the decision is issued and then we're in the appeal period, we can have that conversation with the board and kind of walk through those steps. So, you have a clearer understanding of exactly what those steps are.
Maybe.
And then you can make a more informed decision of, of how you want to address this and potentially other issues.
Maybe that's the step. So, having the decision published and then making our decision. So, this is half a step before that.
Yeah, we just wanted.
Yeah, you see what I was kind of figuring out, okay, I don't even know the merits of this.
Right.
And we don't know if it is appealed or if there's merits for it.
And it is a required golf course for his destination. That's a requirement.
Correct.
And it needed, it was required in phase, the first phase, so that's what they're.
Yeah.
And, and just for your context, and Cindy can get into the specifics in a week or so's time, but the conceptual master plan was affirmed and acknowledged. The final master plan was affirmed.
I was trying to remember all the.
And acknowledged. And so, now what, what, what Mr. Delashman is doing is trying to exercise what was authorized under those master planning processes, so he can vest the resort. So, he's got a tentative plat with some overnight lodging units. He's dealing with demonstrating he has adequate water mitigation. We know that's up in the courts. Now, he's trying to address the recreational aspect, which is certainly a requirement under destination resort law.
The final master plan, this is one of the components.
Well, great, well, thank you for your time and getting us in in the morning. Thank you, Tom.
Well, the process was just started on that one also.
Just a reminder, next Wednesday night, we have a joint meeting scheduled with the City of Sisters. So, you have the, draft agenda was put in your mailboxes. So, just if you have any last-minute changes or additions, let us know and we'll try and make those arrangements.
I had passed on to Sharon, one thought I had is it was all stuff that they were doing. And it'd be good to pick a couple of things that we're doing to tell them about, because they want to know what's, I was out there at the Sisters Economic Development Meeting the other day and filling in for Patty. And they were, you know, they wanted to hear what the county's up to, so this is what they call it. So, I think that would, I don't know what we'd update them on, but something, some of the things we're doing. We're doing a lot of stuff.
There's a whole list of stuff we.
Well, I mean, yeah, so I just thought, I didn't brainstorm it. I just said, I think there should be some things from us, and maybe have added those already, but.
Sharon put project update, city and county on there, so that's kind of a catch-all that we could add.
Well, but see, theirs are itemized, and so we ought to item, I think we ought to itemize ours.
We have a public health.
And I don't think it has to be a department heads that, to explain it. I mean, we, the commissioners can each pick something and explain it, because.
Certainly items that we've talked about today, the COVID-19 response could be one. The stabilization center could be one, both of which are, I think you all are able to speak to, so.
Right.
Maybe the roads, the roads.
The first item on there, homelessness issue, that is one of ours that we'll have staff there to speak to. Because they've, you know, just kind of what we do in our, we have a homeless outreach coordinator. You authorized the application for that, a grant a couple of months ago that would enable us to significantly expand our efforts there. But that was one that they asked us to speak to. But yes, the rest of them are pretty much city, city updates.
Another thing I'm not sure if we've finished or not is the appointment to Project Wildfire. We all did our interviews.
We did it, we already appointed all three of them.
All three, okay. I liked all three, so I was, I'm good with that.
That was our common ground.
It was interesting, yeah, to see it and to hear they all had different perspectives, so good.
Yes, so that gotcha.
More the merrier.
Yes.
Yep, good.
Association of Oregon Counties next Monday. Looks like I'm going to drive Sunday kind of at 5:00 to 8:00 or something, so I won't be there before 8:00 that night. I don't know if there's a dinner with anybody. I guess there's no legislators that may be in town. But they could be Fast and Furious Sunday afternoon, though. That's why I was thinking, if they come back, it could be an interesting close to the session Sunday night.
Senator Finley actually got on our call.
Yeah.
And I talked to him yesterday afternoon, and he wants me over there as soon as I can on Sunday.
Yeah, see, and I, I'm not going to be able to get there till Sunday night.
So, hopefully, they'll be there and Senator, Senator Courtney will be really happy they're there and some things will get done.
Well, it depends on what they have to give up to get them done.
Yeah, so there, that's.
My feeling, but, yeah, so.
Yeah, if the county rigs a bell, we'll all take that down there.
Well, I'm going to go also, I think I'd go, try to go earlier than that.
And if somebody else wants to take the county rig, we can figure that out.
Okay.
Well, at least the road may be open compared to having the, you know, when it was closed.
Yeah, I drove down through Eugene that last time.
Oh, that was fun, I bet. Well, except you can wheel lam it by you, and isn't that just as fast?
Yeah, it's about, I thought it was 15 miles less, but it's about 15 miles more.
Okay.
But it's not too bad.
All right, great. So, so now we need to have our executive session upstairs?
I have one other quick item. I don't know if Commissioner Henderson had asked Dave to brief you a little bit more on the contract for you process that he's setting up in the legal department. And so, I don't know if you, something you'd like to do now or like to wait until this afternoon, do later? But again, it's your pleasure.
Sure, that was fine.
What we've done is we've ascertained that our current management program we have, we implemented a few years ago, legal files, does give us the ability to track contracts along the metrics that we're concerned, which, with such as automatic renewal clauses, insurance certificates, and whether those are valid time-wise for coverage periods, beginning term dates and end term dates. So, I've asked Pauline to go ahead and capture a small population with existing contracts. And we're going to do a little test with those to see. The idea is that those would generate on a, on a predetermined basis, probably at least 60 days ahead of whatever the event would be, a notification through our legal file system that we would then push out to the point person at whatever department is involved with the contract. So, they might get an email saying, you know, heads up, your contract number 2018-123, the insurance certificate at the time the contract was entered into appears to expire in 30 days. You know, contract, contact the contractor to make sure you have a current insurance certificate and, and submit that to us for, so that we can match it up with the existing contract. Or heads up, in 90 days, you have to provide notice if you don't want the auto renewal to extend the contract another two years, things of that nature. Or maybe just simply a heads up 60 days out that the contract's going to be expiring. Because we've had a number of those issues where contracts have expired and they just continue on without a written agreement, typically on whatever the payment cycle would have been. We've been fortunate, there haven't been any real issues, but that's a window of time where if there was an issue with the vendor, with the contractor, that could be a little more challenging than it otherwise might be. Same things with some of the auto renews. We've had a few contracts at departments that have auto renewed. And I don't believe the department was necessarily aware it was auto renewing until after it auto renewed. And now they're committed to another couple of years with a vendor that maybe they wanted to go shop around and see if there was a different vendor. So, those are kind of some of the things. Certainly the insurance certificates, it's not uncommon, we'll enter into a contract and we require certain insurance coverages. The contractor will provide a certificate of insurance that shows the county's an additional insured, but their existing insurance policy maybe ends three months into a 12-month contract. Someone needs to be on top of that to say, have you gotten the new insurance certificate to show that extended coverage through the remaining nine months of our contract?
And don't forget the fake insurance certificate that was given to COIC.
Yes, I'm not aware of that, I don't believe I saw it, but.
Oh, this wasn't.
It was in the news a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Well, this was last year.
Oh, okay, yeah, that.
It was where, yes, a company gave them a phony insurance certificate.
Yeah, I hope that's not occurring, but yeah, we'll.
I mean, it was, it did occur.
We'd like to put eyes on it. So, the, the good news is this is a process we can implement that gives a little bit of centralization to at least tracking that, those dates and that information, and then providing what would be very much documented notifications to the department. So, right now, we have a very decentralized contracting process. And, and, you know, some of that's probably good, but I think having more of a centralized second set of eyes to catch these types of, you know, very simple deadlines and, and trigger events is, is what the hope is. And fortunately, the system that we bought in, in the legal department a few years ago allows us to do it at no additional cost. So, there's really no extra cost in terms of hardware, software, or staff time at this point. So, we think it's a win-win all the way around. Tom and I did mention it at one point, one or two department head meetings ago, and there was no objection or concern. Certainly, the two departments that do a lot of their own management, Health and the Sheriff's Office, are still going to be able to do that internally as they choose. But this would be, in essence, a, a backup system that they could avail themselves of, or not, I suppose, depending upon their choice.
So, you said you're starting up a group of them? Are you picking like three departments or certain kinds of, how are you?
Yeah, Pauline was going to go capture a handful from a number of departments. I believe Health, 911, we're going to be two of them. And we were going to go back and, and input the data for those existing contracts and create the reminder dates and whatnot, some artificial ones that would be earlier so we could see how this would work. And then make sure the system works on that smaller scale before we go large.
Are you going to have a, one of the attorneys or yourself be the, kind of the keeper of the contracts? Or is it going to be Pauline, or what's the?
Well, the contracts all come through me initially, either myself or Amy typically, if I'm not available to review the contracts. But yes, Pauline's the point person for this information. So, what will happen is, as the contracts come through, we're going to have a tear-off sheet. And myself or Amy, whoever's reviewing it, is going to review it, fill in that certain information, the term of the contract, if there's an auto renewal. If so, how, how many days in advance do you have to provide that notice? All that data will be put on this little tear-off sheet that we'll then paperclip to the contract along with our signature on the documents. That'll go back out to Pauline, she'll input it into our legal file system that'll create these reminder dates and whatnot. And, and then the contract goes back to Sharon for the processing that, that she does with it after it's come to legal. So, it really shouldn't add a significant step. My guesstimate is filling out that sheet of paper is going to take us an extra two minutes. We're looking for that information anyway as part of our review. So, now we're just going to be filling it in on a pre-printed document that Pauline will use to input that data into the legal file system. So, ideally, it's not going to, you know, bring about much additional work. Pauline is, you know, believes she can input each contract within a couple of minutes as well. So, it shouldn't be a, a real gigantic time addition to anybody. And it'll have that benefit of creating these automatic reminders that will go to Pauline with copies to whoever in legal we choose to have it. So, if Pauline's out for any length of time, it would, you know, Gwen would pick up on that. And then myself, and then behind me, Amy would be kind of copied on all those as well. So, ideally, we'd have about three levels of default in case somebody's out, so that none of that falls through the cracks.
Is that kind of a go-no-go decision for a board meeting like today, or what are you thinking?
Certainly, if the board wants us to move forward and is comfortable with that, we're prepared, like I say, to do a little beta test on some existing contracts. Our idea would be, assuming we, the beta test worked. Our idea would be, assuming we, the beta test works and everybody's comfortable with it, that we would start it on a date certain, and it would be prospective. I don't know that we have the horsepower to go back over thousands of contracts and start extracting that information and putting in those reminders. I think that would be very time-intensive, and whereas if we just move prospectively from a date forward.
In a two-year, three-year period, pretty much, most things will be in there anyways.
Certainly, most of our contracts are a year. I would say it's a very small percentage that are multi-year contracts.
Yep, good.
So.
I'm supportive. You and I discussed it, and it's really a, kind of just that, that future notification, you know, having a, a contract that has a date for something to follow up on, and it pops back out of the system reminds a few people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
You know, I've, I've always been supportive of increased role of legal, just because that's what, you know, you're trained for and good at. I would like it that we do look at opportunities when there's certain contracts, I'd be honest to know when they're up, opportunities of a new provider or, you know, different provider or, you know, a couple that we've had that, one was the Health CCO, one that took forever, that, that would have been one that I don't think we knew as board members that was so far, I mean, we saw it, but we didn't know it was getting behind. And then the other one was that, the one from Lutheran Service.
Community Services.
Service was one from last September, but we'd catch some of those, but also opportunities for, so maybe you could bring to our attention when something's coming up that like, hey, you guys have been talking about this, you want to look at it again, or something like that.
A good example might be like, for instance, the doc, which I know is going out for RFP this year.
Hmm.
And I believe the pharmacy as well, if I'm not mistaken. Those are both going out for RFPs, because the current providers have been there for quite a while, and so the best practices are to float that back out and make sure you're getting a competitive rate. So yeah, those would be the type of things we could catch as well through this and push a reminder out to admin and the VOC and say, you know, just generally speaking, you might want to be aware that, yeah, the doc contract is, is going to be expiring or something. And those more substantial, significant ones, we could certainly flag.
That'd be great.
Let's help there are doctors we can get.
Yeah, I'm supportive.
Ooh, okay, all right. So, so we need to adjourn now, and then.
Resess?
Resess until 1:30 upstairs?
1:30?
Yes.
Do I have to go somewhere?
Yes. I'm not having, yes.
Okay, 1:30.